This is the planning board meeting. How are you guys? How are you?
Good.
How are you, Tom? Tim? I call you Tom because your emails show it's like Tom.
Tom.
Yeah, I know. So it's quarter after seven. And today is Monday, the 24th of... Don't do that to me. April. And we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So on your agenda, Jill, we have on number three, after the Pledge of Allegiance, A and R 648 South Bridge Road. Eric, he is Ciasin?
Asaiason.
Asaiason.
And you must say Asaiason.
My Spanish comes in.
Okay, Zach?
That's it.
That's where the, um, these nice cabins are, right?
Yes, the, uh, Ben the Breakfast, yeah.
I saw, I saw the plan on, on email.
Yeah, I did too.
Oh, I didn't see that. Oops. Check it out. I think everything is okay.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a little gem for the town because it really brings people
Yep.
from far away.
Oh, it is, it is, yeah. And they have an agreement with the Salem Cross Inn, so all of the way
They do?
people come and they stay at Eric and Linda's place. And then Eric bought a limo, so he takes them back and forth.
Wow.
He's really, he's, they've done enough. They really have.
Very nice.
It's very nice. And they have dinners there with music. It's very, very nice.
Yeah.
They, they came a few many months ago
Yes.
asking for, they wanted to build more.
Right.
We went down to a dinner there and you have to drive a very long time before you
It's a mile or so, right?
It's a mile.
Yeah.
Just, you, when you think you're gonna give up and there's nothing down here, it opens up and it's there. It's very nice.
The books are the end of the year and I think into next year. So, yes, it is a gem.
He's not available to present?
The, um, surveyor had come in, um, and I told him he could go on Zoom or come to the meeting, so he was...
Is he on Zoom?
Could be. There's two people.
Yes, I am. Very long time. Hello?
Yeah, if you can, we can hear you. Welcome in.
Okay, yep.
There's anything you wanna add?
Uh, so yeah, basically, um, what we have is just basically cutting out one lot out of his, I forgot what he has, um, 57 acres. Um, he has over a thousand feet of frontage left, um, I don't know, pretty straightforward, just kinda cutting the lot out of the middle of his frontage and lay it out there.
Sounds good.
Good.
And it conforms to the, um, bylaws? It looked like it did.
Yeah, looks like it.
So I'll do a motion.
Do I make a motion?
Do you have a motion?
I'll motion, I'll do a motion to approve the A and R for our 648 South Bridge Road for Eric Asaiason.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Drucken, aye.
Ed Longdon, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Motion passes. A and R approved.
And sign.
Yeah.
You can probably sign them at the end, right?
Yes.
That way it doesn't...
Yeah.
Yep.
Maybe we can send it by Zoom. Take a picture of the signatures and send it back. So the next section, number four, is the discussion on including PFAS, testing protocols to the solar and wind energy, environmental protocols.
Did everybody get a chance to read?
Yes.
Okay.
Very, very straightforward.
So basically, yeah, just adding like that sentence or whatever it is.
Yep.
So Tim came up with the wording and...
I thi- I think luckily, um, that protocol is a standard one document. That's the main thing. So we can easily make changes to that and not impact the rest of the bylaw. And that's important, I think, as for changing the whole thing.
Yep.
And for PFAS, soil and groundwater, all we need to do is to add it as another sample to be collected for soil and groundwater. And, uh, I think it's a very worthy thing to do.
Yeah.
Um, I've, I've read some information on wind farms and, uh, the structure of the blades on a, on a turbine. And it says a mass of composite material will heavily glue together, but it's also heavily coated with PFAS. Purely because it's, you know, velocity is huge at the tips of the wind turbines and things get stripped off. But to maintain a good weather-resistant coating, they, they put a really hefty layer of PFAS on that and the components, so on the surface and the components that the structure is made of. So it's sort of loaded. And always, I can't remember how frequently they change out the blades, but quite often because they literally tear apart during that high velocity at the tips, I mean, the tips go a lot faster than anywhere else. Solar panels, um, there hasn't been any scientific information on those and very little industry, of course. But from what we've, it's, well, what I've seen in writing from people who've been following it, like we have, uh, construction of the panels and the use, the future use of being out in the wilds and subjected to a lot of different weather and just general treatment, it makes a lot of sense to have PFAS all over the back of roads too, or the back and the fronts, just to protect them, make them, uh, water repellent in particular. And all the connections, whether there are joins in the construction of the panel itself, and any wires or connectors and things of this nature, particularly on the back of the panel. Like everything else, there's very little scientific information on any of this, but there's been a lot of writing about it. The information on turbines was actually by a manufacturer. So judging by where we have seen PFAS occurring, just about everywhere in the meantime, um, I, I would say it makes a lot of good sense to add that sampling to the sampling protocol on both solar panels and turbines. And as far as the protocol is concerned, it's, we can just write it in without disturbing the rest of the, of the bylaw. The, the only difference it does make is, I believe, at the very beginning of the bylaw for the solar and, uh, wind turbine is there's a requirement for, um, establishing baseline sampling, potentially off-site. And that's in the very big, at the beginning of the bylaw. And we can't add, um, PFAS on top of that requirement if that's part of the bylaw or not the protocol.
Oh, so we'd have to, okay, we can just modify the bylaw then?
Yeah. I thi- I think there may be, um, there's a change coming out also for the Phase One investigation, which is in the protocol. That's the ASTM standard. I don't know what change is coming yet. Uh, I've got a webinar on Thursday. And I'll, I'll keep updating on that 'cause that might require a bigger change throughout the bylaw.
Oh, okay.
So i- is it difficult to make a change to the bylaw?
Well, it's gotta be advertised. It's got, we gotta have two meetings.
Yeah.
Uh, we have to have a special vote. We have to appear at the ATM. Yeah, so it's a little...
We have to run it by legal too to make sure that...
Yeah, it's a little involved.
Several steps.
Several steps in.
Yeah. It's a process, but not impossible.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, at this point, we, we're making changes every year, so if we just come up with a list of changes throughout the year and do them, you know, next February or whatever.
And if anything comes up in the meantime, we could just add it as a condition on the special plan.
That's what I was thinking. I mean, they could argue that the bylaw doesn't support it, but they, we could say, look...
Or we could put a condition on it.
Yeah.
With the sci- science has changed. Things have changed. You know, as we learn, we adapt
Yep.
to the situation.
So it'd be a good interim solution.
And, and also there may be changes in the name of PFAS. The methodology, the analytical methodology may change since it's very new. And lab methods are changing as time goes on and it may have a new EPA number and a different method to actually conduct the analysis. Right now, it's, for this sort of thing, it's, it's early days. So there, there could be some changes on that end coming down the road too.
Okay.
So would they have more of a generic name for it then? Or is it just gonna, are they gonna get more specific with types of PFAS?
What, what they're do- actually doing is measuring six types of PFAS. And those are the ones which are mostly toxic. There are about 35 of them in, in total. All ve- chemical variations, but the nasty ones are of the six that are included in PFAS six. The analytical method, um, analyzes those six in particular and ignores the rest of them. Now, as time goes on and risk assessments say this one's more toxic than the other, then they might drug it around and reorganize it. So the EPA number, they go from, what's it, 537.1 to 537.9 or something like that. But it, it, it's all but the lab analytical work and how this whole thing develops over time. He doesn't follow it, but... And there are not many labs that actually run it in Massachusetts so far. There are a few certified labs. It's, it's just difficult. It's, it's expensive. It's about $2.50 a shot for groundwater, uh, maybe double that for soil. But it's in place. That's the important thing.
Okay.
So we just need a motion to accept the changes?
It says on the agenda it was just a discussion.
Oh, okay. All right, well, put it on there for a vote next time. Sorry, that was my fault. I didn't even think about that.
Thank you.
I wasn't.
Always.
Yes.
For wealth of knowledge.
For everything. Yeah, I'm getting older. You have to watch out. And they start cooking things.
Thank you, Tim. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr.
You befriend the other things right now?
No, but I did see a dinosaur over there at Lucy Stone there. The, um, giant snapping turtle.
Oh, yeah.
We're over there with the kids doing some fishing.
Yeah.
The thing
Oh, on the rocks.
Came up by the rocks.
Yep.
And like, huge, all scarred up.
Yeah.
That thing's been around.
Yeah. Like a hundred years old or whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll have to build a ladder for him soon.
Oh, man.
Is that your water bottle, Tim? Is that your water bottle?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening.
Thanks.
All right.
Such a knowledge person. Spooky lokey. Next, it's, uh, some motions to approve us.
Sure. I'll make a motion. We approve payroll for Jill in the amount of $310.50, $270, $202.50, $0, $72, and $270.
Second.
All in favor?
Drucken, aye.
Ed Longdon, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Rich Ihacker, aye. All those motions approved.
I make a motion. We approve and sign the WB Mason invoice in the amount of $101.89 and the other invoice in the amount of $14.56 for office supplies.
Second.
All in favor?
Drucken, aye.
Ed Longdon, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Rich Ihacker, aye. Motion approved.
I make a motion. We approve and sign the March Zoom invoice regarding the reimbursement in the amount of $16.99 in the April Zoom invoice reimbursement in the amount of $16.99 for Joyce Ihacker.
Second. Drucken, aye.
Ed Longdon, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Rich Ihacker abstains.
I make a motion. We approve and sign the February 28, 23 invoices for O'Reilly, Talbot, and Okun in the amount of $477.50 and $477.50.
Second.
All in favor?
Drucken, aye.
Ed Longdon, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Rich Ihacker, aye.
I make a motion. We approve and sign the mileage reimbursement for Jill in the amount of $3.94.
Second.
All in favor?
What was the mileage reimbursement for?
When I have to go mail out special permits and get the mail sometimes for, or mail things out.
Okay.
To the post office.
Drucken, aye.
Ed Longdon, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Rich Ihacker, aye.
I make a motion. We approve and sign the March 13th, 2023 minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Drucken, aye.
Oh.
Both Ed and I were absent, so...
We weren't here, so we can't vote.
Derek Bellis, aye. Rich Ihacker, aye. So we have any comments or concerns?
I have a comment, just so you're aware. Last week, when I was driving down, um, Beaman Road, noticed that, uh, the solar company, Gilatous, was starting to do work over there on the Westbrookfield Warren side. I reminded them that they had no special permits. There were no permits anymore. And they shouldn't be building anything while there's no permits and they would have to reapply for them. They, as far as I know, they said they, they were just gonna put a screw into the ground, try to twist it and pull it up, see if it comes out for the panels, um, for the bases, and that's all they were gonna do. And they were aware that they didn't have permits anymore. So they acknowledged that the permits were expired.
Okay.
And that they would be trying to go and get them again. So...
No more movement during the week? Have you seen?
Nope. Nothing else?
That, that check that was mailed to the town, where, where is it?
With the treasurer.
Okay.
But she can't do anything with it. That's why it's down here. Um, unless they have some, you know, the performance, the performance secured by deposit of money, like a statement explaining...
She should return the check.
Huh?
Seems like she should.
Uh, hold on to the check.
The check falls under that.
I mean, what's been done for other...
That's why that email's here on how to respond to, what was...
No, I said, what, what's been done for other solar facilities?
This is the first one I've, first one I've gotten since I've been here.
Yeah, I mean, we've gotten other surety checks.
Yeah, yeah, Dawn has other. That's why she gave me, we just took a copy of, um, a different solar company, what they had, who also has a cash bond for this. So she just gave, you know, but I can't send that. The question that they're asking is, what do we need? We don't have a form to fill out. We don't have anything. It's for them to write up. I'm not, you know, I can't send them another solar company's contract. So that's why we need to know how to respond to this email.
So, so will you run that in legal?
Yeah, well, that's what I was gonna ask. What do you need? Legal opinion or, I mean, and how to...
It's in the by, like, it's the, it's in the the bylaws, so we have...
So they're asked, they gave us that check for the project and now that the project is expired...
It just came as a check and an envelope with nothing else.
And they want it back?
No.
No.
No, they're just, she, if you see the email in front of you, she was just asking, she's explaining what it was for because, one, we just had a check with no, there wasn't a letter or anything with it, so I sent an email saying, what, you know, what is this to go for? And then...
So they recently sent that check?
Yeah, while I was out. I had it when I came back. So she's saying there does not...
So if you cash that check, it would be like, well, yep, you're okay to go ahead and do that.
Well, no, we, it definitely shouldn't be deposited or cashed in any way. Hold on to the physical check and just find out from legal, seeing how, we might have to return it because if there's no active special permit anymore...
Right.
Why would we have a financial surety bond?
Well, that's true, too.
Because there is no active special permit.
Scan the envelope and the check and send it with this letter to Rich or somebody to forward to legal.
Was it 1254?
At least scan it for the, for the record.
Yeah.
Soon as they fix my scanner.
Take a picture of it.
Do that. Put a call on this morning for them to come, but no one's returned my call.
What happened to your scanner?
I don't know. I came back day one. The computer wasn't working, so I had IT there, so I lost a half a day. And then on Thursday, my scanner is not, it's offline and tried all the fixes, IT looked. They said, nope, it's the copying, copying machine.
Disconnected because of the clean and painting and all that?
Oh.
It, it worked the first day. It worked for three days and then all of a sudden, when I came in on Thursday, it wasn't working.
Is this the leased one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you shouldn't be calling, um, Northeast IT. It's the leasing company.
Mm, wait, but this was offline. Wouldn't know if it was a IT problem or an actual copier problem. So when they first, but they, they said, no, it's not.
Yeah, we just don't wanna be billed by Northeast IT to fix a printer problem that's covered in the lease, you know, so...
So by the way, how, how was your operation?
Better than the last. They, now they feel the same right now. This one doesn't wanna heal, but thank you.
Glad to have you back.
I did nothing. I stayed off my feet, so I couldn't heal.
Good.
Can you listen to doctors' orders?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so yeah, the, this is, uh, decommissioning.
My, my thoughts are with this is, why would we even be taking any type of finances from them if there's no permit? They'd have to go through the whole process again anyways.
Yeah, that's, I think that's true.
I, I, you know, I would just, to be honest, return the check.
That's what I was thinking.
And, and no, no, there is no active permit you would need to reapply at this time.
I agree.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, we really can't keep it.
Just let Jim know that that's what we recommended. Oh, is the word performance agreement? I don't even know where they're getting this performance agreement 'cause it's not even in the bylaw. Did I spell that right? I'm gonna have the performance agreement recorded. Yeah, I don't know.
You would have to check the, um, special permit to see what was on there for conditions. Maybe there was something on a condition.
Yeah, the wording there. But yeah, it's the decommissioning. A performance agreement would be like a performance bond.
Right, for work performed, you achieved certain goals.
But it's a private company, right? I mean, it's, if they don't achieve their goals, then it's on them.
Are you surprised?
Yeah.
Apparently, we're doing the job for them now.
Yeah.
I would send it back and just say, there's no, there's no active permit.
Yeah.
Therefore, we don't need anyone.
Yes. Feel free to reapply under the new bylaw.
Yeah, and if you reapply, then we'll need it.
How come they send it until now?
Well, 'cause they want the building permit. 'Cause everything they've been up, been able to do up till now, they don't require a permit for.
Yeah, they can't get a building permit because they don't have a special permit.
Right, yeah.
Ooh, boy. Any more concerns?
So I'll just mention, um, ZPT is also aware now that their special permit on Beet Street has expired. They went before conservation, looking for a three-year, um, extension to their conservation permit. But conservation gave them a one-year extension because they're not really sure. If they don't have a permit, then what are they doing with their conservation permit? So they were a little nervous about extending anything at all, but they said, okay, we'll give you, you know, just a year, so... That's where that stands.
But they know that they don't have a special permit.
They know that now, yeah.
That one expired too?
That one expired, yeah. They both expired around the same time, like this past summer of '22.
And now they have to go through the new bylaws?
Yeah.
What about an update on, or like Copart? Anything happen with Copart?
Yeah, I talked to, um, Merrick today.
Yeah.
I ran something, I think I sent it to everybody. There was two conditions on there that I ran by Tim 'cause they pushed back against it and Tim agreed that, um, what Copart was looking for was fine. So their, Merrick is just doing their wordsmithing and then we'll have a final agreement soon.
All right, you sent that today?
No, I probably sent it a week or two ago. Yeah.
Yeah, most of it.
It's just Tim's opinion on, yeah, I don't know how much we can talk about it, but...
Okay, no, all right, I'm just asking.
Can't get into it.
No.
Just yours.
It's moving forward.
It is, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the Pepsi truck, I gave that to Jim. So I'm not getting anywhere. And I don't hear anything from the police, so...
Yeah.
And I really...
Maybe we can paint it and say, welcome to Warren.
That's what he wants to do. He wants to paint it and it doesn't up along there.
Who wants to paint it?
The owner of the truck. He, the owner of the truck put that there because he claims that he told the police that people were having bonfires on his property.
This is the guy who owns the land?
The, owns the land.
Robertson.
And he didn't, yes, he didn't, he doesn't want anybody on his land. I said, you could have put a yellow, you know, trespassing tape on there for about $5.
Typically, yeah, no, people put no trespassing signs up on trees.
Yep, yep, yep. And the police, and I told the police that and the police said that it's possible that somebody could have gone on the, the right-of-way for the high-tension wires and gone in there, but they wouldn't know about that and they don't have any ATV to go check it out. And the guy across the street, Ryan O'Shea says there's somebody on his land. So anyway, I...
How would a trailer prevent anybody from partying?
And I told him it needed to, I told him it needed to be moved.
If anything, you've given them something to play with.
Or hide behind, like if they're gonna build a fire, maybe.
I told him it needed to be moved and he said, I paid a lot of money for that. Who's gonna, and I was told by the town that it was okay to have it there. And I said, could you tell me who told you that? Because it's incorrect and we should correct that person. I didn't say I was gonna do anything about it. I just... No, I can't give you my daughter's name. I said, okay. So at that point, I just called you. I said, it's all yours.
Okay. Okay, did he say why he, I mean, he, he just parked it there one day?
Yes, because he doesn't want people on his property. But a yellow no trespassing tape would have been a hell of a lot cheaper than buying that truck, except I don't think he likes Warren. Except, I don't think he likes Warren.
Well, he owns a much older land than Warren.
Yes, he doesn't like us.
This is the Robertson Land Trust.
Any other?
No, I talked to Merrick today about the ZPT lawsuit, but I don't think I can say anything right now.
No, okay.
What else? ASD, that's in process. There's been nothing submitted to the tree warden. So that's where that stands.
Can the ZPT be, solar field be inspected like Mary asked or?
Inspected for what?
Oh, okay, so.
Oh, the other one?
Yeah, Corey Hill. So we received money to pay back outstanding invoices to Beals and Thomas. So we got that money in, but we don't have any money to move forward. So, you know, they paid whatever they owed us, but they didn't fund anymore. So we're not gonna send people there if we can't afford to pay them. So I guess the answer to Marty's question is, I mean, we're still involved in a lawsuit. That's the status, so everything's on hold. And then we can't really inspect the solar field until we get some money for a peer review.
So wouldn't they fall into non-complacency?
Well, I do.
Would that in the permit?
Everything's on hold.
Because of the lawsuit.
Lawsuit, so, yeah, I mean, it could be trashed, but we don't know and there's not much we can do right now, so.
So the answer is no. It can't be inspected.
Yeah, correct.
Julie, is it a time to inform about this project?
Yeah, do you have the mail-in labels that she gave? Okay, good. Yeah, I think to.
So while Jill was out on his, on her.
Thanks.
Operation, I'm glad we see that and up on over here, the Port of Lincoln Secretary, they, like, to try to, I, Jim, so we're, save it for a little bit, then he gave it back to me and now.
That ended up with the West Warren Water District? Right, was it that? Something ended up from planning board with the West Warren Water District.
Haven't heard anything.
Hmm, okay. Okay, what is this one planning board member list for Worcester Registry?
Uh, you just have to sign the list. So I just put it on there. So it's number two, let's, you know. It's nothing that needs to be voted on. It's just there. They do it every year, the updated list of who's on the planning board. Just have to sign it and I mail it in after the voting is complete because.
Oh, after the election.
Yeah, election because.
Sixteen?
Oh, what do you have? Uh, your expires in May of twenty twenty-four.
When does mine expire?
May of twenty twenty-six.
Okay. When is the next open C?
This May.
That's me.
It's you? We should start promoting it.
What do you mean promoting?
Stop. Okay. Sorry.
Okay.
Do you need a list for the registry, would you have?
Yep, I just have to, you just sign, yep. And then after the election, I'll mail it.
Do we need to schedule a date for Saturday?
Yes. Nope, this is the first. I receive and I still have to get it to all the departments, which will be doing this week. Said to give them at least a month to kind of look it over, but I did the, I counted. And if, in order to get it into the paper on time and with all the timelines, the twenty-second of May would be able to give us enough time to schedule the hearing, get it in the newspaper.
Okay.
Get everything mailed out. Mm-hmm. Provided petty cash, the new petty cash comes back in time.
All right.
So, May twenty-second.
Any more concerns or comments? Then we move into new business, old business, Mary Richardson?
Would you, yeah.
Yeah, we just did that. Okay. Sorry, we jumped ahead.
Yeah, I jumped. And same with the next one.
Fine with me. We talked about the member list.
Mm-hmm.
And our next regular meeting will be May eighth.
Mm-hmm.
Then tough one comes up.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longigan, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Rich Ihacker, aye.
We are.